I'm called to order the city council meeting of March eleventh. Set the DMs. In lieu of the opening prayer, well, actually, first we're going to do a moment of silence and then the mayor will do the prayer. So this morning I was informed that Gordon Nysley had passed away. He's one of the best people you'll ever know, fellow in the community, teacher, coach. I just want to offer our respect to him. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. We invoke the blessing upon this meeting and on people of goodwill everywhere. May we prove ourselves worthy citizens, give it to service and steadfast in faith. May we be faithful in these ideals. May we stand firm when the fight, when the fight is hard. May we have strength sufficient for this day. May we be, may we be as big as our problems and bigger than our responsibility. May we live up to our capabilities. Thank you.
Through the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is since one nation under indivisible.
Ben, would you please call the roll?
Member Matheny?
Here.
Member Warren?
Here.
Member Shroya?
Here.
Member Owens?
Here.
Member Wyre?
Here.
Member Orr?
Here.
Member Matheny is absent, six present.
Member McLeish.
McLeish, sorry. Sorry.
Motion to excuse member McLeish.
Second.
On favor.
Hi.
Close Russian characters. I have a motion and a second to approve as presented minutes from February twenty-sixth, twenty-two four, and the twenty-twenty-four February financial report.
So moved.
Second.
On favor. And we will have recognition of the public. There is one speaker set up for the first. Ben, if you'd read the preamble for me.
At this time, members of the public who have signed up to address city council will be called to do so. Each speaker will be given five minutes. Speakers shall be called in the order they signed up. During this section, comments shall be limited to legislative items appearing on this meeting's agenda. The rules for speaking and the speaker's time will appear on the screens. After you have finished speaking, please remain at the podium to answer questions from officials at the dais. This will serve as final warning for all speakers. Any violation of the rules will result in ejection from the premises.
Chuck Osborn.
Chuck Osborn, three oh seven February Street Southeast, Moore Camp, Ohio. I'd like to speak tonight on ordinances eight and twenty-nine regarding the TIF, the giveaway of more tax dollars to IRG and Stuart Lickner. I don't know if anybody here knows about it, but Stuart Lickner is known in California as the crooked, downy, toxic site developer. There's a publication of East, and I don't have the date, two thousand nine. And I will hand out to council members. Stuart Lickner has built an international empire buying former military toxic dump sites and promising to clean them up. Many workers and community people around the country have been sickened apparently by the failure of Lickner to properly clean up the sites, all from the article. I don't know how aware people are, but Mr. Lickner bought the Hoover property for five and a half million dollars. He has been more uncompensated and recouped that price because we, hoping tax dollars have been paid out to him or for his benefit, close to seven million dollars. How much longer do we continue to give a multimillionaire more public tax dollars? The property that he's also choosing to give to the schools, like all the other properties that have been donated to school, is very easily contaminated with PCBs. In fact, past properties delivered or donated ten, twelve, fifteen years ago do not have a properly approved cap on the contamination. The EPA has repeatedly asked Maple Street Commerce and the district, school district, that the crushed limestone covering on the property does not qualify as a, an approved final cap. There's another article in California, I don't see a date on it. Also an old name. Yeah, must wait. At any rate, there is no reason to continue to give this gentleman millions of dollars. And what you're going to wind up with here, after they try to fill these so-called condominiums or whatever it is, you're going to wind up with just low-income housing for Section Eight. I don't, I don't perceive this as being an attractive place to move to, to live in. If anybody takes the time to go down to the library and look at some of the EPA records, repeatedly it says all through these records that the West Factory area is contaminated. The city was not laid out and designed to accommodate making that a destination. Our streets are not wide enough. East Maple needs to be widened. Main Street needs to be widened all around there. That square has been a living nightmare to drive through. People often divert when they're coming down East Maple and cut over to my street, and you can see all the traffic coming up and down the street. In fact, I recall a former councilwoman, Marsha Kingsley, telling me that she's avoided that intersection for years. So I do not urge you, I urge you not to approve this. Either this gentleman can live up to his so-called expertise for decades and develop this with investors that he is able to line up or not. I will leave you these handouts. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
What are the comments or questions? Moving on to our business. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance eight dash twenty?
An ordinance declaring improvements to real property within the city to be a public purpose, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, requiring the owners of the real property to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing an urban redevelopment tax increment equivalent fund for deposit of service payments, and authorizing the director of administration to enter into a tax increment financing service agreement and a development agreement with the property owner.
Ben, would you like to, is this where you wanted to do your presentation?
I believe the mayor.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for attending the council meeting tonight. I have the honor and pleasure to take us through a PowerPoint, not so much myself, but I delegate Mr. Benjamin John Clark of council, to walk us through the, the TIF agreement. So hopefully you'll have a better understanding of what we're coming from. For about the last three and a half years, we've been in constant conversations and discussions with Maple Street Commerce LLC, Living in Liability Company, and also with representatives from Industrial Realty Group, Mr. Stuart Lickner and Mr. Osmond, who I was talking about just a little bit ago. So out of those three and a half years, we've continued on a mission to how can we get this project to be shovel-ready? So what I'd like to share with you is just a couple, a few tidbits of information. We're looking at a project of four hundred and ninety-four thousand square feet. Two hundred and twenty-six market-rate apartments, market-rate apartments, forty thousand square feet of restaurant, commercial, or retail space, hopefully fifty full-time jobs, a fifty-five million dollar capital investment in our community, and also coming out with a total estimated developer cost of sixty-seven million, fifty-four thousand, four and sixty-five dollars. As we go through the next page there, we're going to highlight several things that we want to talk about, the project description, the value of the added proposition, our project timeline, a definition of completion, requested incentive, and conditions and terms. So I'm going to ask Mr. Young, if he is quite skilled on, with our PowerPoint presentations, and I'm going to ask him to help walk our, our council and also our citizens attending tonight. So Ben, would you please take over for me?
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you, sir.
So the mayor just did our project description for us, so I'll jump straight into our value added. So right now today, the property we're discussing, which is the West Hoover Brick Factory, a parcel ending in four nineteen, is valued at roughly two and a half million dollars. Our conservative estimate is that after construction of the proposed project, it would be valued at approximately twenty million dollars, which is an increase of eighteen point five million dollars. And that'll, that increase will be important as we explain exactly what incentives they're asking for. It's estimated after completion that their payroll will be roughly two million dollars, which would be thirty thousand per year in income tax. And if you are correct, it should be seventeen point five million, not eighteen point five million.
I was like, wait a minute.
My bad. So the proposed project timeline, this timeline is just an estimate, assuming that city council passes this on its third reading on March twenty-fifth. If that does not happen, then all of these dates will change because they're all relative to that final date of current. So to begin, in March twenty-twenty-four would be council's final action. So the first dot we have here tonight, we're on its second reading. Assuming that you all approve that, we'll move on on the twenty-fifth to the third reading. Now, there's a thirty-day period before that ordinance becomes effective, so the ordinance would be effective on April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four. We would then estimate that we sign the final development agreement with the developer on April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four. And that would essentially start the clock running on this whole project. So in spring twenty-twenty-four would be our pre-construction benchmarks. So April, May, the developer has estimated they would give the promised land and funds to the North Canton City School District. In May, June, the developer intends to submit their building plans, and we would then, presuming they're all acceptable, issue building permits. Those permits are good for up to one year, so as long as they start within a year of the issuance of the permit. In July, the developer intends to secure their loans and/or bonds for building the project. And then August of this year, twenty-twenty-four, is the developer's intended construction start date. Now, then we get into some hard deadlines. So assuming passage on the twenty-fifth, the first hard deadline would be October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. The developer must have transferred the land and the funds promised to the North Canton City School District. Well, in a couple slides, we'll get into what exactly was promised. Then on April twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty-five, construction must have started. Again, the developer intends to start in August of twenty-twenty-four, but per this agreement in front of you today, they would have until April of twenty-five to start. They would then intend to be done with the exterior of the building by June of twenty-twenty-six, and estimated in early twenty-twenty-seven, they would complete the residential portion, which would be the final portion of the project. The contract that is before you all tonight does have a hard deadline of April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven, for the project to be what's defined as substantially complete in the contract. And we'll go over what complete means. Any questions on the timeline?
What happens if they do not secure the loans? They don't have the loans yet?
You mean today?
Yeah.
Today, they do not have the loans yet, no. And actually, there are some conditions that we have set that they must meet before they secure their loans.
Okay, but what happens in July if they don't come up with the loans or that kind of money?
Well, presumably, and Wayne can correct me, they would have until April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five to secure their loans and figure out if they're starting or not.
There's a financing contingency in the, the agreement that indicates that if they don't have financing by December thirty-first of this year, the agreement's null.
Okay, thank you. All right, so they must be complete by April twenty-twenty-seven, but what constitutes complete? So there are four benchmarks that must be met for the project to be considered complete. Number one, the developer has to have completed and provided to the city as-built plans and drawings of all improvements that are to become city property. So as you look through the agreement in front of you tonight, that would be every time it says off-site improvements, those are things that will become city property in the end. So these would be improvements to public roads, public right-of-way, public spaces. Second, the developer has to provide the city with an itemized statement of all costs for the project, including verification of payment from all contractors. Third, the developer has to provide evidence that any and all liens that may have been placed on the property during the process, so if they, for any reason incurred any mechanics liens, for example, those have since been released. And fourth, they must pass all final inspections and receive their permanent certificates of occupancy from the City of North Canton Building Department.
Will all contractors be registered with the city?
That all contractors, per our ordinances, must be registered with the city. All right, so what exactly is being requested? The developers are requesting a tax increment financing worth a hundred percent of additional property taxes for the next thirty years. So what this means is that the value of taxes paid right now today will remain paid right now today. Only the added taxes that are a result of completing this project will be waived. So what that means is that if this project never happens, there is no incentive to be paid out. The developer will continue to pay all existing property taxes to all entities entitled to property tax. Any additional taxes that result from the project being completed will then be reinvested back into the project. So from our twenty million dollar final valuation that we've discussed earlier, that would mean there's an estimated annual value of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. Now, assuming that that doesn't adjust for inflation at all over the next thirty years, the straight value over the life of the project would be thirteen million, seven hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Seventy percent of that roughly is the North Canton City School District. So they would be the person who foregoes the most future revenue. The net present value of that foregone future revenue, which means if they had that money to invest today, how much money would they need to, in thirty years, end up with thirteen million or change, is roughly five and a half million. So what the school district has asked for from the developers is essentially an upfront net present value. And they're requesting ten point three acres of land, which they're valuing at roughly three million dollars, and then an additional two point five million dollars in funding donated to the City of North Canton School District. Questions about the incentives being requested?
So the additional taxes paid to the auditor, just as if they were paying the property taxes normally, and then it comes back to the city? The city holds those funds to verify the improvements are done, or reimbursing the developer for money that they paid to the auditor?
Correct, you're jumping ahead of me a slide, but yes, so the, so the, the developer, as councilmember Matheny said, will pay all taxes they would owe, including on the new property value. What will then happen is the extra taxes that are covered by this incentive agreement will then be paid fully to the City of North Canton into a special TIF fund. We will then reimburse the developer from that TIF fund for costs incurred, provided they meet a series of conditions to receive those incentives. And so that's what the bulk of this PowerPoint's going to be about, is the conditions to receive incentives. So there are five broad categories of conditions to receive incentives that we're going to go through. Pre-project due diligence, ongoing compliance, construction requirements, financial conditions, and then just sort of general condition. Category one, pre-project due diligence. So all of these conditions have to be met before bonds are issued or loans are secured, to your question earlier. Number one, they must submit their building plans to the City of North Canton Building Department, and those plans must be approved by the city. The developer had their first initial plan meeting this afternoon, actually, so they've already started this process. Second, the developer will have to provide full environmental reports for any improvement that will become city property. So any piece that they are intending to dedicate to the city for ownership, we have to receive an environmental report on. Third, they have to sign a completion guarantee. They'll, it is likely their lenders will also make them sign a completion guarantee. If their lenders don't, you should have seen in your packets, we have a sort of blanket completion guarantee in case that doesn't occur. Fourth, they have to obtain all their required permits. As I said earlier, the permits are good for one year, so as long as they start within a year after getting their permit, they'll be good. So what we'd like them to do is get all their permits, have them ready to go before you secure financing. And then number five, they shall provide the school district with the agreed-upon ten point three acres and two point five million dollars. Category two.
Sorry.
No?
The change in the timeline, where we see them having to pay the timeline, or having to give the school their items, that timeline change was based on the school's willingness to change that timeline.
Yes, so they have signed a separate agreement with the North Canton School District about what they are donating to the school district. You've come an excellent point. When we started discussing this, we had initially said, we will not pass this unless they've already given things to the school. At this point, the school district has agreed to receive those items later, and if the school is happy, generally we're happy.
And they still have to do it to get the incentive that they're looking for.
And they still have to do it.
Accomplish the same goal, basically. I got you.
So category two is ongoing compliance, and these are conditions that could last for the full thirty-year. So number one, they must complete the project by August thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven. April, sorry. Number two, the city has the right of inspection of the project at all reasonable times. There are some conditions in the contract about, you know, we have to ask twenty-four hours ahead of time, we can't just show up and trespass, essentially. Number three, if the site is transferred, conveyed, sold to somebody else to complete the project, this TIF agreement is conveyed upon the new owner. Number four, a memorandum of this TIF agreement will be recorded with the Stark County Recorder's Office against the property. Number five, the developer must correct all of their existing code violations by December thirty-first of this year. So everything that they have already received citations for, they must complete by the end of this year. Number six, the developers shall meet with the city at least every three months until the project is completed. Number seven, the city is not responsible for pursuing or guaranteeing on the developer's behalf any variances should they be sought, and we shall not amend our zoning code to specifically accommodate this project. And number eight, the developer must maintain compliance with all applicable environmental regulations for the duration of the thirty years. Questions about that?
I'm correcting all the codes that they've already been fined on. Those are, I thought they were going to pay that.
Right. I can't hear you, John.
Okay, I thought they were going to pay the, the fines that they, because some of those fines are almost a year old.
So this...
That's how much, a hundred thousand?
Ben, go ahead.
I believe it's ninety-some thousand at this point, yes. So this, if approved, this development agreement would essentially function as a corrective action plan, which is permitted under our city code to correct your violations. And if you fully comply with a corrective action plan, your fees may be waived.
Which Ben, we do do on a regular basis with other entities, not something special.
Yes, if you remember, Administrator Diorio gave a presentation about Safe Bill a couple weeks ago, and we had a slide about property management review board, and only two of the twenty-some that have ever been submitted have actually made it to the board, the rest have all been resolved or are still pending, and most of those were resolved with corrective action plans that resulted in fines being waived.
Yeah, because I mean, that's the intent of the program, right? We want to be in compliance with the code, not necessarily, it's not a punitive program. It's, the intention is for them to be in compliance with the violations.
It's forward-moving plan.
Right, yeah.
And that's the whole point. It's, it's not to be punitive, it's to follow what it may, that's my, action is self, that's what, that's what everybody wants.
Right.
Okay. Category three, construction requirement. These conditions apply to the duration of the construction timeline. So construction must start within twelve months of the signing of this agreement, so that's how we get to April of twenty-twenty-five. The work must reflect the plans that was submitted. You can't submit a permit for one thing and then build something else. The developer must stay on the schedule that we just outlined. There are some exceptions for, you know, financing delays, or if there's a court order that stops them from moving forward for some reason, those sorts of things. Number four, the developer shall submit plans for the city's approval prior to starting any work, and we will respond within twenty days of that plan's available. And number five, the city has the right to inspect and review all improvements that will become city property. So again, these are any roadway changes, public space changes. And the developer must provide a three-year warranty for any improvements that will become city property. There are some caveats to that. For example, if we do the work ourselves, the developer doesn't have to provide a warranty, but if the developer is doing the work, they have to provide the one. Questions about construction requirement?
Give an example of improvement to city property that might occur.
So Whitworth Street along the backside of the property is planned to be beautified and a new sidewalk put in and potentially some more decorative light bulbs that would then become city property.
I might be jumping ahead, but on payment of the workers for construction, is all this prevailing wage?
Yes and no, and that'll be on the next slide.
Okay, no problem.
So category four, financial conditions. So these conditions apply to the funding of the project and the use of TIF fund. So number one, the developer has to give us a bond for the total cost of all the improvements that will become city property after the project is completed. This is standard practice for any developer, whoever builds anything that becomes city property. For example, if we had somebody developing a neighborhood... Uh, for example, if we had somebody developing a neighborhood, they would have to provide a bond for the cost of the roads they were built. Number two, we, the city, agree to reimburse the developer with TIF funds, subject to this agreement and the applicability of state law. Allowable reimbursements include planning, costs, engineering costs, acquisition, construction, installation, and costs to secure financing. But reimbursements do not include it administrative costs, interest costs, premiums, or principles on debt for the financing. So once financing is secured, you cannot use any TIF funds to pay it back. This, and third, the city's reimbursement obligation is only limited to whatever TIF funds are paid to the county and then reimbursed back to us. So there is not a, a set amount that we are guaranteeing we will reimburse. It is whatever the auditor's valuation results in us receiving, that is the maximum amount that will be reimbursed. Number three, the city shall provide no other financial assistance to this project. Number four, payments shall only be made when the developer provides a written payment instruction. The developer has provided an executed cost certificate, which is a, a standard template that's included in the exhibits in the back of the agreement, and that certificate has been approved by the Directors of Admin, Finance, and Law. And third, the developer has provided evidence that the contractor has been paid. Questions about that?
So they can use TIF funds on trying to secure the loan?
On trying to receive it in the first place, yeah.
Okay.
All right, financial conditions continued. Subject to the availability of TIF funds that we just talked about, payments will be made in the following order. Number one, the city will be reimbursed up to twenty thousand dollars a year, increasing five percent annually, for our costs to administer this incentive program. That's number one. Number two, um, is reimbursements to designated payees of cooperation agreements. So this is, this is section six point four of the development agreement. Now I'm going to try my best to explain it right now in layman's terms. So, um, through an additional cooperation agreement, which none exists right now, we, the developer and their lender, would agree that we will pay the lender directly for their bond or loan repayment. Um, and those payments would be obligated to occur automatically, so to speak. So, uh, essentially, we're going to sign an agreement that, for example, and Wayne's going to correct me if I'm wrong here, we agree that you have already installed all of the toilets in the whole building, and that that was worth a million dollars. So we agree, we will pay your lender your debt payment of fifty thousand dollars a year, every year, automatically, because we've already acknowledged that you have done the improvement for that loan. Good simplistic way of explaining it.
You know, has that, has leases within a commercial piece type situation. This is a pretty crude comparison, but just for the purposes of illustration. You have a, a property that's mortgaged and that property has re-commercial tenants, and those commercial tenants each pay you rents. Most banks will require that you assign all profits you receive from those leases to the bank in order to pay off the loan itself. Think of it in that fashion. Basically, we are agreeing that if you've entered into an agreement with the bank, the funds that come in from the TIF that you've assigned to the bank, we will pay directly to you.
And that's still only under the umbrella of whatever, whatever TIF, whatever taxes they've paid in that are in that.
It's still capped by whatever we've received from the auditor.
Paid based on the improvement that they've made to the property, it can only be that much.
Much less the bank's way of saying, we get the money first.
Correct, yeah. Okay, then third is reimbursement to the city for any costs we've incurred over that twenty thousand dollar cap. Fourth would then be reimbursement directly to the developer for the costs of developing the property. Basically, your, your standard TIF payment that we've been talking about this whole time. And then fifth, finally, if any remainder exists, it is remitted to the North Canton CIC. Questions on that? Additional conditions. So again, it actually, I believe, says it in three or four different places in this development agreement. The city will provide no other financial assistance to this project other than the TIF funds as outlined. The developer will reimburse the city a lump sum of fifteen thousand dollars for our attorney's fees resulting from negotiating this TIF agreement. The developer will comply with prevailing wage for all improvements that are to become city property. So anything that has become a public property or re- or capital asset must be built with prevailing wage. The developer shall indemnify the city against any loss, costs, or claims arising from the construction of this project. And the developer must maintain appropriate insurance for the project for the duration of the agreement. And if you're really interested in what that is, page twenty of the development agreement spells out the insurance part. Any questions on general conditions or conditions in general before I move on to the next section? Okay. And now we've gone through all of those conditions that the developer must meet for the incentives to be dispersed. So what happens if those conditions are not met? That's called developer default. So the developer is considered in default for ten potential reasons. Number one, if prior to completion, the developer is dissolved as a corporate entity. Number two, if prior to completion, the developer files for bankruptcy. Number three, if prior to completion, the developer violates any term of this TIF agreement, which we just went through, all the lovely terms and conditions. Number four, for the life of the agreement, so for the full thirty years, if the developer fails to make any payment that is owed to us. Number five, for the full thirty years, if the developer violates any city building, zoning, or property maintenance code. Number six, for the full thirty years, if the developer deviates from the approved plans without written consent of the city to deviate. Number seven, prior to completion, if the developer fails to provide, provide bonds to the city for all improvements that are to become city property. Eight, for the full thirty years, if the developer ever abandons the project or fails to finish the project. Number nine, for the full thirty years, if the developer makes any material misrepresentation to the city. And number ten, for the full thirty years, if the developer provides any false or misleading documents or materials to the city. Questions about those ten things?
Yes, so I just want to make sure that if the developer sells in year five, that all ten conditions transfer to the new buyer.
Correct. At least if they wish to keep receiving TIF reimbursement.
Is there any, like, penalty if they're not completed on time?
If they, if they fail to complete on time, yeah, they would. So that, that would be violating the terms of this TIF agreement.
Okay.
All right, so what happens if they're in default? So we would issue a written warning. They then have thirty days to correct whatever the default reason is, or ten days in the event of they failed to pay us the payment we were owed. If it is not corrected, we have four options that are not mutually exclusive, is the correct way to say it. First, we can, uh, terminate the whole agreement through written notice. Second, and more likely our first step, is to withhold TIF funds, if reimbursement. Third, if, if the issue is they have not, uh, paid us money we are owed, or they have not built an improvement that we are supposed to build, we can seek recovery of the money or build it ourselves and bill them for the cost of building it ourselves. And then there's, you know, the fourth catch-all, any other legal remedy allowed to us under law. Questions about that? All right, but the developer is not the only party to this agreement. The city is also a party to this agreement, and therefore we can also fail to meet our obligations. So that would be the city default, and what, what constitutes us being in default? So there are two ways we could be in default. Number one is we fail to meet our obligations set in this agreement. So, you know, they've done everything required of them to receive a reimbursement, but we don't give them their reimbursement. Or number two, we provide to the developer any false, misleading, or incorrect documents or material. The developer is then entitled to the same cure process we are. Written warning, thirty days to correct. If we fail to correct the default, the developer may terminate the agreement or seek to recover money owed to them. Questions on that? That's it in a nutshell.
Do you have one question? Talked about twenty thousand dollars to the city for administrative things. Is there a single person dedicated, one person to monitor this? Is it going to be handled by all the administration?
It's in discussion, yes. They'll let them to oversee.
Yes, it seems like that's the one.
A question also, so.
Uh, Christina's asking a question.
Said one question. So the law director, finance director, and director of administration will review these requests for reimbursement, is that right?
Correct.
And did I read that's like every three weeks or once a month, or is there not a set timeline? Am I making that up?
No, there is a, there is a set timeline in which we have to respond based on when they submit requests for reimbursement. And then there's also, presuming they've already submitted previous costs, because, you know, obviously they're going to build this all in two years, but then they're going to keep getting reimbursed over thirty. Assuming we've already approved whatever the costs are, then there is a, a different clock on, um, every time we get reimbursed from the county, we have three weeks. I think that's the three weeks you're referencing. We have three weeks after that reimbursement to transfer it to the developer.
Yes, for clarification on the first timeline, it's forty-five days for the earliest meeting that we meet after they've submitted the cost, basically whichever comes first.
Okay. Thank you. And then will Marty, like, does he have to go and inspect these things? Like, does he have to go and see that, you know, we're paying for toilets, we're installed, or whatever? Are, do we have to send people out to inspect, or how does that work?
Um, so there, under state law, they'll be required to have building permits. Um, and so we'll be able to cross-reference their inspection records from their building permits with what they're requesting.
Which I want to point that out, because this is a very important part of the agreement. They can't go buy toilets for the Hoover Districts and use them at the Hall of Fame Village. So that, that's a very important part of this agreement. I want to make sure people know that. Great job. One pages of an agreement. Explain it to make it helps everybody understand what's going on. Appreciate that.
Thanks.
Any other comments, questions? I mean, I, I'm going to go and say that, that the city's well past the standard of, well past the threshold of the standard agreement. I mean, there are many certain terms in here that are very specific for the project, which I think, knowing the history of, of what has happened, and, and honestly, their failure to follow through on what they promised, we, we've built a pretty strong agreement to protect our taxpayers, our city. So just want to put that on record. Comments, questions, anybody?
Uh, yes, man. Again, and city schools, yes, it's supporting us. In full support of this, their agreement, and then supporting us to go forward.
Yeah, and, yeah, for the record, they passed their vote on this unanimously. Question? Okay, um, I'll make a motion in second to adopt the second reading ordinance eight dash twenty twenty-four. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to new business, Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance twenty-nine dash?
An ordinance continuing the community reinvestment area tax incentive agreement between the city of North Canton and thirteen oh three to thirteen oh five North Main Street, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Okay. All the standards were met in this agreement, nothing's changed since the last reading. Any comments or questions from anybody? Make a motion to adopt the first reading.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion, uh, to suspend the rules of counsel required.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. And finally, um, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-four under suspended. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Ben, would you please read the title of resolution ten dash twenty twenty-four?
Thirty?
Thirty, sorry.
A resolution to approve moving the city's investment portfolio from UBS Financial Services to meter public funds, coupled with a custody depository agreement with US Bank, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Nothing has changed since we talked, um, last week, and Jim gave a really good explanation of why we're moving and the announcement he can save. So if no other questions are concerned, I'm going to adopt. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Here's, and can I have a motion in a second to suspend the rules of counsel required?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. And, um, can I have a motion in a second to adopt position thirty dash twenty twenty-four under suspended? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance thirty-one dash?
An ordinance amending chapter three hundred and thirty-nine, commercial and heavy vehicles, specifically section three thirty-nine point oh two, use of local streets, local permit conditions of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton in order to enhance the clarity of the commercial and heavy vehicle code, and to update the schedule of fees to better reflect the services provided.
So this legislation focuses on enhancing efficiencies, application of regulations, streamlining the process of oversized loads and permits associated with that, also integrating those permits with our online system.
This is weird, huh?
No.
So we're looking at, what, a hundred dollars on that permit? Or is that two hundred?
A hundred.
A hundred?
Flat fee.
Flat fee, okay.
It's currently thirty-five.
Okay, make a motion to adopt the first reading ordinance thirty-one dash twenty twenty-four?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, uh, Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance thirty-two dash?
An ordinance amending and re-titling chapter fifteen oh one, Ohio Fire Code of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton, and repealing chapters fifteen oh three, Life Safety Code, and fifteen oh five, Bureau of Fire Prevention of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton in their entirety in order to enhance the effectiveness and clarity of the city's fire code and enforcement thereof.
So maybe those two chapters, moving them into one, um, streamlining those, the duties of the fire inspectors, establishing a more formalized process for force of violations, making a better process.
Question? Make a motion to adopt ordinance thirty-two twenty twenty-four for streaming.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. carries. Please read the title of ordinance thirty-three dash?
An ordinance amending chapter one hundred and thirty-five Department of Fire and Emergency Medical Service, specifically section one hundred and thirty-five point oh three Personnel, and chapter one fifty-five Personnel Regulations, specifically subsection one hundred and fifty-five point oh four G, Part-Time Schedule of Compensation of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Canton in order to eliminate the part-time Assistant Chief Position and amend the title of Full-Time Battalion Chief to Assistant Chief.
Much covered in all of that descriptions of battalion chief. I'll be the assistant chief. Assistant chief's position entirely. So streamlining the whole structure and building. I'll make a motion to adopt the first reading ordinance thirty-three twenty?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we have one speaker for the second part. Ben, if you would read the preamble.
At this time, members of the public who have signed up to address city council will be called to do so. Each speaker will be given five minutes. Speakers shall be called in the order they signed up. During this section, comments shall be limited to items reasonably under the city's authority. The rules for speaking and the speaker's time will appear on the screen. After you have finished speaking, please remain at the podium to answer questions from officials at the day. This will serve as the final warning for all speakers. Any violation of the rules will result, will result in injection from the premise.
Okay, Larry Tripp.
Larry Tripp, one-one-two-seven East Maple North Canton, Ohio. I spoke on the evening of November thirteen, twenty twenty-three, when council began their rural coaster ride for additional revenue as needed by the city. First, it started with the elimination of the tax credits paid to another community. Then, a one-fourth city income tax. And finally appearing one and a half, one-half percent increase as now appears on the ballot. That was the same evening a representative from Fiction Associates made a presentation on the fire EMS staffing in new facility. That evening, we found out that council president and other council members were totally unprepared for the events that were to follow during the course of that meeting. The gist of my remarks that evening was, why and how did the city suddenly find itself with messed up finances? Only one week after the November election. I never did get an answer, but it was not too hard to figure out. One only had to look at city representatives were not doing their job and overspending. My assumption was pretty much affirmed and clarified with today's article by Mr. Wang as posted on the repository's Facebook website. Percy State's Fire Department in dire straits of funding. Again, why? Obviously, having full-time fire employees would add to additional expenses with higher salaries, insurance benefits, and higher overtime being paid to a full-time employee versus a part-time. So the city releases all part-time fire personnel and hires six new employees. Why? Was this another city blunder? Again, what? I don't know. Today, I read about issue seven, as approved, if approved, would become effective one-one twenty twenty-five. The city at that time would begin, would begin generating dollars to the tune of three point six million dollars. So let's start with that figure, three point six million. Now, deduct from that, an offset with no new road levy, three hundred and eighty-five thousand. Now, deduct from that, payment for our budget deficit right now. One point, one and a half million dollars, one point, one five hundred thousand dollars in payment. Now, deduct from that, payment for the bond and interest for a new EMS fire station, one million dollars. Now, deduct, still deducting, payment for the city hall renovation to move police department to second floor, less than one million dollars. So let's say seven hundred and fifty dollars, another deduction. Then, pay for five point five miles of streets at three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per one and a half miles. Deducting not, another nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. All of a sudden, we're in arrears again of one million, ten thousand dollars. Now, if, and at my age, that is always a big word, if, I read the article right and did my calculations right, we still find ourselves in arrears of one million, ten thousand dollars. Why? We're not getting the right facts from the city. You're misleading us. But yet, you demand everything from IRD when you can't come and give us the straight facts. Now, this does not even include the moving of city hall representatives, Dogwood Park, or the swimming pool. So, as I hear myself speaking, I only, I honestly hope I've made a mistake in reading the figures or reading Mr. Wang's, uh, uh, report. If not, this fine city is in far worse shape than we can imagine, far worse shape. I always stand to be corrected, so perhaps you could delay your executive. Let me know. Am I off base in my review? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Comments, questions for Larry? So, I mean, I'll start. You, you keep saying that we have a one point four million dollar budget deficit for this. Wh- where is it coming up in your?
Not, but I'm asking you.
I, I'm asking you for where, where the numbers came for all of them. Where did you get all your?
Well, it's on the city website for one.
Where did you get the one million dollars for the, I can't hear where it is now.
Oh, the one million.
City Hall. Who gave you those numbers? Because I haven't seen them.
They were in today's paper, and they're floating on the city website.
Where are we moving to when this is happening?
They're floating on your signs, the figures are, but you're saying on your signs. That's what you're going to pay for.
And, and does it say when we're moving, where we're moving to?
No, it does not.
So you just automatically assume that it's happening this year, it's coming into that budget.
Yeah.
It's your first part that you're wrong with.
Okay, well then.
The one, one four million dollars is not continuing.
Wait, just one more time, please.
One point four million dollars is not continuing year in year estimate. It is a projected deficit. We've, we've told you this before.
No, you haven't.
Oh, in writing several times. Okay, I'll point that out to you this evening.
Answers from John Orr, yourself.
What answers did you need? I told you how to get the answers.
No, yeah.
I told you, and you have four other people to talk.
I'm waiting. I'm at city hall.
Have you talked to your regular councilman? Have you talked to three at large?
Why do I need a regular councilman? I'm asking you, you're the one that brought it up.
All I said was what I said. I'll be Wednesday night.
You laughed at a low, low government.
Well, I, no, I didn't laugh. I go, what does a low, low government mean?
You were laughing.
No, did I, did I write that I was like, no, Larry, you're, you're fabricating once again.
How I come up with one million dollars a year? I've given you the figures. I got them from Robert Wang's report, and I've gotten from the website. Okay?
The one point four is not a year-over-year paritoria.
What's one point four?
The one point four that you said is our, our budget.
I didn't say one point four.
Okay, what did you say then?
What's a four? What are you asking me?
I'm done if you guys have any more questions, comments.
I mean, the comment I think that you were making is, things listed on the sign, it's not saying those are all going to be done the first year that we get three point six million.
Well, then why aren't they on the signs then?
Because they will be done.
Oh, they will be done. Okay. They will be done. So how are you going to make up this one million when you're already moving in five and a years?
I, I don't know where you're getting your numbers. I, I mean, it's not, to me, it's like, Larry, it's not, it's, you're not making a coherent argument that makes sense, and when we're trying to put the numbers back, you don't even know where they came from.
I know where they came from.
I just asked you about the one point four million, four million dollars. You just, you didn't even.
One million.
Pretend you just didn't read it. You just floated it to me.
I didn't say one million four. You didn't listen. You didn't listen like usual. Thank you.
Thanks. Matthew?
Yeah, thanks.
Just comment. Again, before we then voters, and if you sound, if you, they will lose. And that's a income tax rate, about half a percent. And again, if it's approved, this increase will help additional funding, primarily sought to address the needs of the city's police, fire, and EMS, and support for our city projects for parks and recreation, Dogwood Pool, Reeds, and other city services. Taxes are necessary for a reason. We provide vital services for our community. Now, again, our current tax story is histor, is, is historically low since the early nineteen seventies. Just want the voters to understand, a spending spree is not the goal of this increase, but the sufficiently paid for the vital services our, our community has become accustomed to, and not to stick to bill for future generations with no political voice. Again, I think even with our imperfect tax system, the revenue provided by this half percent tax increase will only strengthen and not weaken our city's economy and services we have all been. So again, in summary, I see our community, we're citizens, unite, take action to create a lasting change for the betterment of it. We're talking about some uncertainties here, but while change may bring uncertainty at times, change can also bring a window of opportunity. And that's where I see the issue of seven, bringing an opportunity for our community. So, again, we're not going on a spending spree if this is approved. There are a number of things and services that will be addressed over time. Thank you.
So, do you have any other cities?
Maybe not in the state, but definitely not in general.
So I think that that shows the city very efficient job, jobs to proceed, working at a level well below what other cities.
And many of those cities have their own police level. They have their own parks level. So we're using this font.
And all of the financial information is available online.
Gina.
Either that.
The director.
Maybe it's help getting to them, that Gina or Gina could both be very helpful. Be to the processes, seeing as how many of them.
We even have some changes to the final deficit number that we have, which means and when talking about those signs, and they brought up a very good point, is we're not going on a spending spree. Those are, the income would be provided year after year, and those projects, as we just know, this project that we talked about tonight, it's a four-year project. A pool would be a long project. Any roads, it's, it, grants are bid out already till twenty twenty-seven. So a lot of those money, they are for the future.
To, to throw all those costs in one year is a misrepresentation at best.
In some of the comments, whether, whether we're moving city hall, where the police is moving, nothing, nothing has been determined. There have been no decisions made. The police are not moving upstairs. We are not moving to another building at this point. Nothing happens.
Well, then why do you post it?
So you sat down, your comment period is up.
Thank you.
One, one last comment. Do you think this is the mayor's budget? It is the mayor's budget. We set up at the beginning of the year, trying to determine what our expenses are going to be in the next twelve months. Is this project going to cost, at the time the project is done, when those deals come in, they may be different. We're trying to project, what is the overtime going to be? What unforeseen watering break is going to happen? How do we budget? How do we budget utilities? How do you budget for your December of twenty twenty-four utility bill? So when we set up the initial budget, that's what we're trying to project. So when we fall short of that, we have reserves in place to prepare. Yeah, and we make adjustments the following year to try and get that budget a little closer to what those actual expenses are going to be. It's still a projection. Nobody can, nobody has a crystal ball that's going to say exactly. The mayor doesn't want to over spend or project, but he's still making estimates. Well, revenues coming in, expenditures going out. We have got a great team that puts that information together. A lot of work is into it. I said before, open gov, you can see what all of those, each departments are spending. And, and you'll see by, by Ohio revise code law, our annual budget is balanced by law every year.
With a percentage of that.
Carry.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's move on. Okay, um, we're going to move into executive session. Can I have a motion in a second to enter in executive session for purpose of discussing employment on public property? It's permitted by Ohio revise code one forty-one point two-two. We'll have a rule call after the motions.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All in.
You just said it. Member Orr?
Yes.
Member Wyer?
Yes.
Member Ellen?
Yes.
Member Shroya?
Yes.
Member Warren?
Yes.
Member Matheny?
Yeah.
Six in favor, zero opposed.
At this time, council is in executive session. Let, let the record reflect that council will be joined by the mayor, the deputy director of administration, the directors of law, finance, and clerk Gina. That's how blind they are. Yeah.
I'm going to make a motion to adjourn executive session. I have a second.
Okay.
On favor?
Aye.
Host. Let the director reflect that no action was taken. Uh, it's move on to department reports.
Thank you very much. I'd like to make this statement tonight. Patrick Giorio has advised me that he wishes to voluntarily, voluntarily retire from public service to the city of North Canton effective April 2, 2024. His last day in employment with the city will be April 1, actually. We thank him for his extensive service to the community over the last seven years. And together, much has been achieved. We wish him and his family the very best. That's all I have.
I'm supposed to agree, but my wife told me that you won a community award.
North Canton City School.
I worked alongside Patrick for seven years and we've done a lot of great things for the city. We've built a great team and we'll keep that team moving forward. Lot going on right now. I think the other TIF was great, then did a great job putting the points together for everyone. We're very excited for this and keep moving forward. This past week, we attended the TAT meeting. TAT stands for Talk About Potential. We need that, we need at Walsh University on that. And got people from great community leaders from all around. Uh, we had the director of the store, for the new Meyer store, and everyone's excited that that's kind of what was there. And it's just a little thing, but it's also a big thing in the community. So with the collaboration between Walsh University and the new Meyer store, we are going to be able to provide the community with the Easter egg hunt that the J C's used to always do. So Meyer's going to supply everything, a great community partner already. And we'll work with Walsh and it'll be held down there at Walsh. So the information coming out on it will be on March 30th. That's the Saturday before Easter. I guess they're held down at Walsh and there'll be more information on that. But so many positive things going on in the community right now and just right at the cusp of it. Very excited and just keep moving the team forward and doing all the good things that we have been doing through the years here for leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Finance.
I'm going to do my obligatory reminder that there's 35 days left.
Counselor first, then.
Um, Friday, uh, March 8th was the deadline for contractors to submit to be our construction manager at risk for the new fire station. We had four contractors submit. Over the course of this week, we'll be narrowing that down to three, four RFPs and final interviews. Um, and then from there, we'll be choosing our final contractor.
Will you have anything to add?
Everybody continue on with the water service lines?
Yeah, I'm digging up my fire.
It's move on to your council reports, James, not here, David.
As chairperson of personal and safety. Change happens. We work hard collectively to have the best people. Mayor Wilder is leading this city. If you follow his leadership, rest assured, everyone is working to the best that North Canton can be. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to thank the administration and Ben for the awesome, very thorough presentation that we got about the TIF. We asked lots of questions about that and I thought you did a good job touching on a lot of points. Uh, when I ran for this office, I said I wanted to be part of the winning team here in North Canton. And that wasn't just like a hokey line that I put on my postcard, it's what I really meant. And it's been my pleasure getting to know the folks that are part of our administrative team and learning about all the things that they do. And I am proud to be a part of that team now and support the leadership of our mayor.
Stephanie.
John.
Oh, John.
That's two weeks, sir. Thank you, mayor, for your fine leadership. Appreciate it. Uh, we have a strong team. Other than that, no report.
John, Stephanie.
You said it perfectly. Um, change does happen and change provides a lot of opportunity. And we'll see, you said it too. We've been a part of a winning team for a long time. I think I'm going on 12 years of council and so many, many teams, quite honestly, and different mayors and different chief of police and different finance directors. And I will say that everybody we do, looking out for the best interest of the city. And choices are sometimes hard and I respect what the mayor has done, um, disregarding change and very much appreciate you looking forward and I know that we'll all behind your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina.
Just going to echo everyone else and say I have absolute confidence in the team in place at City Hall. Lots of people there often and they're doing incredible work. And I also really fully support the mayor and appreciate his bravery in making, you know, some hard things.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to start off by saying that, uh, thank you, everybody that put together the agreement on the TIF. You know, from the schools making the initial agreement to legal, to administration, to the mayor, to everybody. There was a lot of hard work put into that. And, and I think of it, a lot of it is from the past, from maybe things that have happened in the past to, to protect us, protect the taxpayers. So I appreciate all the hard work that's gone. Want to thank the mayor, thank the mayor for, for his comments. Uh, I want to thank Patrick for the work that, that he and the mayor and the rest of the administration and finance has done over the years. They, they put in together a great team. And I think the best part about the team is, you know, Gene, I remember interviewing you and, and you stressed about prostrating in contingency and Catherine, I heard you talk about it. And if you look at the structure of the city, there, there is a number one and there's a number two. And the structure is there for contingencies to happen. And that's what happens. So, you know, we're going to move forward and, and it's going to be, it's going to be fairly seamless. You're not going to see interruptions, you're not going to see the chaos that some people have brought up. It's just not happening. Our structure is there, our team is there. So I have full confidence in the mayor and Catherine and everybody. And in downtown departments, we have an exceptional team. So, um, you all have our support 100%. Final call for new business. Okay, sitting done. Uh, March 18th, we will have no meeting. Uh, March 25th, we are going to have a public hearing on, at 6:45 and then, um, a regular meeting at 7. And we'll undertake motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.